...meeting for Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. We started at five thirty and held an executive session for discussions regarding the town administrator's contract and also the southern property. No votes were taken on the town administrator's contract. It's on the agenda further this evening or later this evening. On the southern property, we did extend, we took a vote to extend the period of performance to the end of April. So we'll see where that takes us. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I want to start out this evening just by extending my personal thanks to our public safety team. Many of you probably know my son-in-law Jeremy was, had a situation last Friday evening, and he was transported to Cape Cod Hospital. I just want to thank you all for the performance here. It was a bus by Bruce that he ended up taking, but that's what happens when you're really busy. But my family certainly appreciates everything that was done, and I know it's the same thing that's done for everybody else, but this one brought it home to me, and I certainly appreciate it in both cheese. If you would pass it on to your folks, I would certainly appreciate that.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Weekly briefing. Caroline, probably talking about the Easter egg hunt. Yeah, sure, I'm just guessing. It's that time of year, isn't it?
It is. It is. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that on Friday, March twenty-fifth, at three-thirty at the middle school, we will be having our egg hunt with over eight thousand eggs so far that are already stuffed. Those include candy and toys, and there might be some gold eggs which hold some real cash. That's all I'm saying. Everyone is welcome to come, and we do need volunteers. You can call the community center. That is on Friday. The bunny does show up, so if parents or grandparents or the adult that brings the child would like to bring a camera, you're welcome to take pictures with the bunny as well.
Do you know, there's a board selection policy that we as board members get a five-minute head start on the kids?
Yes, and those eggs are hidden at the community center.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll be sure to be there. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The other thing I just wanted to announce is that we will be having our fee meeting at the community center on March thirtieth. Two meetings again, as we did for the not-for-profit groups. These are for the for-profit groups that would like to use the community center. Everyone is welcome. We encourage people to come. We'll put out the minutes as we did before. March thirtieth, the first meeting is at eleven o'clock, and the second meeting is at five-thirty. It's on our website, it's on Facebook. Letters will go out, posted on all the doors. We're happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted everyone to know. And I'm sure it will be in the paper.
Mr. Galvin has it right there. He's got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I just want to mention, I just want to mention as we go forward that Angelo Lamonti is participating, he's right here, I can see him, from Hilton Head, right? You in Hilton Head?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And you can hear him, you can hear him. So he is participating remotely, so in that case, we do every vote, and you have to remind me once in a while by a roll call, just to make sure we don't follow it up, okay? All right, and before we get to the consent agenda, which includes bringing on board our newest police officer chief, do you want to introduce our new officer to the community?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Come on up, Ron. Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to introduce you to Ron Rogero, and we are supremely confident that he will make an excellent Howard's police officer. He comes to us from the Boston area, but he and his wife are relocating to the Cape. So it was just our good fortune that he was looking for a job at the time the Howard's PD exam started in October. So Ron did extremely well throughout the whole fairly lengthy process. As you know, about eighty candidates, as you see in your packet, eighty candidates took the exam. Our selection committee narrowed that down to twenty-six who they interviewed. Ron came out number one of that process, and they recommended seven go from those twenty-six to our command staff panel, which this year, through input from Deputy Chief Gagnon, a fantastic idea, we, I'd like to send a shout-out to Sean Fernandez from Cranbury Valley, who sat on our command staff interview panel, and we all felt that Ron did an extraordinary job. He came out number one in the command staff panel, too. So a little bit about Ron, like I said, he's going to be moving to the Cape area, so that's fantastic. He's got an associate's degree in criminal justice. He's currently a police officer at Mass General Hospital up in Boston, and also works part-time at Merrimack College, correct, Ron? So he comes to us with some good experience already. He's already completed the whole process to be standing up for the Basic Recruit Academy that begins April eleventh, so he's ready to go, and we are, again, supremely confident that he's going to make an excellent addition to our department.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, welcome, Ron.
Welcome.
And I see our basketball team just got better.
That is correct, a team of one. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to vote this in a second. Okay, so we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Janelle?
Mr. Chair, I move that we A, approve minutes from one February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting, and two February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting. B, confirm the appointment of Ronald Rogero as a full-time regular police officer, as recommended by Police Chief. C, approve the request for assistance from the Caleb Chase Fund. D, approve the amendment to lease agreement with Hot Stove, Inc. at Cranbury Valley, and amended A B C C Form forty-three to include service on eighteen-hole golf course. E, approve the recommendation of the building commissioner to waive Chase Library sign application fee. F, approve Chapter ninety project request for the reconstruction of Gilbert Lane, and G, approve two thousand and sixteen long pond bass tournaments.
Second? Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Here you go, and we'll put it to a vote. Be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Angelo, what's your vote?
Aye.
Hear that?
Aye.
It was an aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. It's a vote, thank you. Okay, next is Liz Argo here. See her anywhere. We'll wait on this until Liz Argo gets her, I guess. Okay, next, we'll just move on to old business, non-binding ballot question regarding the Harwich Middle School. We discussed this before. We pass it on to Town Council. Chris, you want to give us any edits the Town Council had or suggestions they had for it? Otherwise, we're going to...
I think that they were primarily typos and grammatical, so it's in the materials that was distributed. So I don't know if there's any specific questions pertaining to it, but that's what we have.
Okay, Linda?
Just one question on the back. Option for explanation and comment. Sort of in the middle of the paragraph, it says the building would be leased as is, and the lessie would pay all utility bills. Don't we mean all operating expenses? So don't you want them to pay the insurance on the building and...
Whatever the intent of the board is.
I think it's operating expenses, so rather than just utilities...
No cost to the town.
I just pay all the expenses of the building. That's a minor.
Which number is that again?
Number four.
Number four, midway down.
It also says in addition, routine maintenance of leasing grounds. We'd be responsible to less see.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, like, insurance. So really should we pay all operating expenses?
Including insurance. Mm-hmm.
Janelle?
In regard to question four, not the explanation, but the actual ballot question, I see that we've added the words "or sold." So do you favor the retention of Harwich Middle School building to be leased or sold? I'm curious about why we added "or sold," and yet the explanation only talks about lessies. Right. So can we get rid of "or sold"?
I'm not sure.
Peter?
Yes, Angelo.
Just a comment, I think what that does is just give us more options. This is not binding, and the town will have a chance to vote on what we do.
And no matter what happens, this thing is coming back to us, some sort of town meeting action under any of these circumstances. So your point, I think...
It makes it broader.
Yeah, your point is, it gives more options, it makes it broader. Angelo's input. Anybody else? Sharing microphones?
I'm just wondering if perhaps in the beginning line of that, the building and land may be leased? If it is, you know, it could be leased, and if it is, it needs to meet all these requirements?
Yes, if leased, it has to meet all these requirements.
Right. Would you feel more comfortable with that?
I'd feel more comfortable to get rid of "or sold." That wasn't part of the original question, I don't believe.
That was the consensus of the board members to include that.
Oh, I didn't...
Well, I should say, the majority of the board members to include that.
Charlene, can I just ask a question? What you were just talking about modifying, was that the explanation comment?
Yes.
And what were you going to do?
Just to say, the building and land may be leased, or if the building and land were leased, either way.
Yeah, because if you sell it, it doesn't matter.
Right. Whichever way the board prefers.
And quite frankly, if you sold it, it doesn't matter what, I mean, it is what it is, right? You sell it, there's no more obligation on the town's part.
So just add if the building and land were to be leased?
Okay with that?
That sounds reasonable.
I'm just still hung up on the sold part, because number three is selling it. So number four is also now including possible sale. So my question is, is the sale going to be contingent upon the use of the buyer?
Well, I would just say that, you know, it's one thing to sell it, if someone said they obviously have to meet the zoning requirements or get zoning relief, if you will, to do what they would do with that site. So you're not going to sell it, being facetious, but I don't think you're going to sell it as a shooting range, because it won't make any, I don't think that's ever going to go anywhere. So it'd have to be a use which you can get the community to agree they want to have, I suppose.
It just seems redundant to me. If we've got question three is to sell it...
Question three is selling it for housing, the way I read it.
Just for housing.
That's what it says.
And now question four is lease or sell for a self-sustaining private organization, cultural and/or community center or educational use? So that precludes housing again? And it, I mean, it's only these things?
Well, if someone came to us and said, with one of those uses, and said, well, I really don't want to lease it, I'd rather buy it, this would allow us to do that, I guess. Well, this is only a non-binding question anyhow, so...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? We need to include this in the ballot somehow, some way, so someone wants to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we include this non-binding advisory ballot question regarding the Harwich Middle School on the ballot for Armney elections.
Second? Moved and seconded to include this in the ballot discussion. Angelo, do you have any discussion?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, okay. Here you go, and we'll put it to a vote. We're going to do a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
He said aye. Aye. Thank you, it's a vote. Have you seen Liz Argo yet? Okay, well, under new business, A, is established the Fire Station Two Rehabilitation and Renovation Committee as recommended by the fire chief. Chief, how are you?
Very well, Mr. Chairman.
We have the written document you sent us. Obviously, your team's done a lot of work.
We have, through the administrator, we were able to put together a working group to do a pretty in-depth analysis of what we think ought to happen out there. On the cap, I'll back up a little bit to say that for some time on the capital plan, there's been an earmark, fifty thousand dollars for plans and four million dollars for rehabilitation out there. So it's been there, it was given a timeline, and we're coming up to that timeline. So it's time to bring this to the board, and I would ask that we continue our work, that we've already started. It's a good group, cross-section of town employees with the engineer, facility manager, which is very important, and two civilians, and some, a couple of folks at the station. I think we've outlined pretty well where we are tonight, and I think we're on target with the budget. I don't expect, nor will I endorse exceeding that four million dollars. To me, that sounds like a lot of money, but then again, back in nineteen seventy-seven, when I came here, to put the second fireman out there, I thought four million dollars a lot of money then, too. We hope to be able to do that within budget, and we have, very quickly, some of the things we had to look at. Tear it down, build new. We think that structure's got a good backbone, that we can fix it. Would regional efforts in any shape or form change the scope of what we want to do out there? We don't believe it will. We believe the size of that station is adequate for what we do here in Howard. And if, through the chair, you, Mr. Chairman, and other boards decided that they wanted to do some sort of regional efforts out there, we don't believe that what we want to do there will impact that. We won't be back in five or ten years to say, well, now we're going to make it a regional station, we have to double the size. I don't believe that's going to happen. I think we're sizing it for the need now and in the future. And I would ask, and I would ask that strong consideration be given by the board to allow the working group to continue with its work.
Can I just ask a question, or I'd just like you to explain to the public what kind of apparatus you're talking about adding out? You know, provisions to accommodate what is what you're really looking at at the moment? Just so people...
Very quickly, there's a small boat out there, seventeen-foot skiff. We have an ambulance, and a first-line pumper, and a reserve pumper. In short form, we're going to have, add the fourth ambulance. Now, as it is today, we also have a pickup truck out there. We're tight now, so we don't look to dramatically increase the size of the fleet at all. The big increase now, the big change for the folks at the fire department and for the citizens, is adding that fourth ambulance. And immediately, someone might say, well, we're going to add more people. Not necessarily. The idea right now is to do a study. We're working with the administrator and the assistant administrator to look at our needs, personnel needs, and as we go forward, may we be back for two firefighters or down the road, four firefighters? Probably yes. I think the load is, will warrant that. But what we're doing to Station Two isn't driving the number of people we have, it's going to be the workload. So what we would hope to do was add living quarters, which would be a second floor, and an additional bay, apparatus bay, to fit what we exist, what we have now. Because something's going outside shortly.
Actually, I get asked all the time, people see that, this is the Barnstable County, there's a truck in the back there?
Yep, that's one of the assets of the Barnstable County Regional Technical Rescue Team.
Right.
And we host one of the trucks here. And there's another truck at the base at Otis, and there's another truck, I believe, in Barnstable.
Is the intended truck to live outside?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just checking. People ask me all the time, so...
We, with some help from the highways and maintenance and the electrician, we did run a, put a post out there so we could keep the thing plugged in.
Right, okay. So what you're asking this committee to do, or this board to do, is establish this committee and use the current roster of members of the study group to be your appointments on the, our appointments on the committee.
That is my request, yes.
So I would entertain a motion at this point in time, if someone would make that motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the charter for the Rehab and Renovation Committee for Station Two, and that the current working group be the initial following seven, the initial seven members. Do you want me to read them?
Sure.
Chad, Craig Chadwick, retired insurance management, John Clark, Harwich Fire Captain, Norman Clark, Harwich Fire Chief, Sean Libby, Harwich Facilities Maintenance Manager, Joseph McParland, attorney, and Harwich Capital Outlet Committee member, Joseph Rego, Harwich firefighter, and Scott Tinsley, Harwich Fire Lieutenant. Second?
Second.
And Spence seconded. Janelle seconded, okay?
Good.
You thirded it. Okay. We, I think we typically call this the charge to the committee, so we call this the charge.
The charge to the committee.
There you go. Okay, moved and seconded to charge the committee with the Station Two Study Committee as presented. Discussion? We'll put it to a vote. Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Angelo?
Aye.
All right, chair is an aye. Okay, great. Look forward to the results, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Okay, next we have...
I think Liz is here.
Yep.
Oh, she's hiding back there. Okay, Liz, come on up. Liz Argo from C-Vac. Liz, we have the documentation you sent us. Our interest this evening is in the revised budget. We don't want to revisit, we don't need to revisit the history, the revised budget, and as you submitted, as we asked you, I think the last time you were here, what it would take to serve the needs of the Harwich solar system, if you will, for the coming year.
Right. So we have done very well this year, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, in adhering to our budget and doing better than. We have about, our income is up and our expenses are down to the tune of about, netting to the tune of about sixty-two thousand dollars better than we expected at this point. That's actually only going through November thirtieth, that's as far as our financials have been brought up to date. But at five months in, we were ahead of our budget by that sixty-two thousand. So we are doing the task at hand, which is to rein in expenses, mostly our legal, and so we've been, we've been successful with that. Our fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget is in review. It was given out to you all at, I think, at one point. I'm not positive I actually gave it to you guys. But it's, was in your package, and it shows that we're in the red by about eighty-three thousand fiscal year seventeen. And the revenue is pretty much what we know we're going to get, and it's going to stay the same. There's no adder in this budget. You got a letter we sent to Chris that explained that we have waited too long, so we don't feel we can impose an adder for fiscal year seventeen on you at this point. So, but we will return to it in the, in the summer for fiscal year eighteen. And one of the aspects of the budget that I, that I did give out, and it shows that we're in the red, it's not apparent to you that we had a reserve, which we do. We had a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar or so reserve that we would be able to survive on for fiscal year seventeen. So that kind of gives you the broad strokes, the big picture. We have moved our office. The county had asked us to move their, dealing with their own fiscal issues and a space concern. So in consideration of the county's needs, we've moved our offices to a regular office building on White's Path, and that's going to be better for us, but it did add, of course, expenses in the move itself. The rent is great, it's five hundred dollars a month, but there was first, last, and a deposit, so those kinds of expenses are not reflected in our FY sixteen budget. But we now have a monthly financials developed and delivered to us, so we have a, thanks to working with Glavinsky and Associates, we have a very more active and current view of our financials. There's still some review going back to two thousand and fourteen, but in order to get our financials absolutely ironclad, but we're very comfortable with, now that we're reflecting accurate financials.
Okay, so you also gave us this spreadsheet, I'll call it, called Task slash Cost for Bookkeeping and Accounting, and this is Harwich-specific cost with eight offtakers. The total is twenty thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and nine cents. Now, if we back up to the budget you said for two thousand and seventeen, and you mentioned, I think that you have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar reserve, and that's how you're going to fund, you know, you're going to complete your budget for that year. Does that budget include continuing to do the work on the Harwich solar system, accounting-wise?
Yeah. Frankly, we're contracted to complete the work that we provide to you right now.
Okay, so for, just to be clear, for two thousand and seventeen, which is the budget we're putting together now...
Yep.
We don't need to have a discussion about the twenty thousand dollars, because that's going to be done for us. So I think you're giving us a reference point for future years, what it might cost us if your budget got back to where it was previously.
Yeah.
Where we thought it was headed previously.
Yeah. I mean, what we're, what we're not going to be able to do as the organization that we want to be is bring forward the new initiatives.
Yeah, no, we understand that. You made that very clear last time, yeah. I just want to make sure we're not looking at another twenty thousand we have to go find in our budget.
No, no, okay, no, no. We're, as all of the members, you are getting the service that you're contracted for with the power sales agreements and your, your own contracts for the Harwich Capital Landfill Project, and you don't have to provide any more money for those services.
All right, good, thank you. Questions for Liz? Thank you, but I do think on this topic, you know, we've had enough discussion about the solar system at the landfill and how the revenues and, you know, the expenses flow and whatnot. Chris, I think this board would find it very useful to revisit that in the near term before we get our budget finalized. There still seems to be some confusion about, number one, what the projections might actually be, and then where it's going, and what expenses we might be able to, you know, attribute to the water department, et cetera. We need to have that discussion, I think, is, I think everybody wants to have that discussion. So if your team could repair something and bring it back to us, let us know, and sooner rather than later, because we have to deal with the budget. But we want to, we want to understand it, even if we have to go to the whiteboard here and draw some pictures or something, or whatever it is.
And I'm happy to help with that. That's really what we're here for, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, our intent, and, you know, I think one of the, one of the mistakes that I know I made at the start of this fiscal year was, you know, we had two brand-new board members, didn't have the history as to all this, you know, those of us that are still here, including Angelo, we go back several years in this whole project. So for us, it's like, well, what do you mean? Of course, that's the answer. And we can't assume that, you know, that there's the same knowledge base, if you will, just because of not being here. I mean, you sit at this table, you learn a lot of different things. So we'd like to sort of come up with a timeline sort of thing about how we got here. You know, we made certain decisions about tying union contract increases and whatnot to the solar system. We know what numbers we got last year for kilowatt-hours, we want to revisit or see where we are now relative to last year for the year, you know, the months that we have, and those kinds of things. And then I think this board needs to wrestle with, you know, the real topic of, you know, what, what do we do at the water department, and how do we handle all that, whether it's on the revenue side or the expense side, both, whatever combination. So we want to have a nice discussion about that, an informed discussion, so, Michael.
Mr. Chair, I have a lot of questions on this topic. Would it be appropriate for me to email Town Administrator my questions in a list?
Sure, yeah.
Tomorrow?
It's the time to get the questions addressed, if we have questions. Let's get them on the table.
I read five months' worth of notes on this, and I'm even more confused than the beginning of it.
There you go.
Well, and reach out to C-Vac, please, because it is complex.
Well, it's more on the town side, please.
Understood.
Someday, we're going to put you out there with a solar panel and just say, aim at the sun, will you? Okay, Chris, did you ever, have your hand up?
No.
Okay, all right. Anybody else on this topic? All right, Liz, well, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it.
Sorry I was late, I didn't realize you were...
When I first read this, I thought we were going to have to send you another twenty thousand, but I'm happy with that.
Well, actually, now that, let's talk about, no, never mind. Well, actually, now that, let's talk about, no, never mind.
No, 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 let's not. Let's talk about next time you come in. But we'll see. Next, you have Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles, discussion and possible vote to support. What's this? Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned at one of the meetings that you wanted to kind of get a sense for where the Finance Committee was and last Thursday night they started taking some votes.
Yep.
So, obviously, the chairman's here if he wanted to go through, but I'm happy to kind of summarize if that's, if that's okay.
Please do.
At the last meeting, at the last meeting, the, they didn't have all the different budgets adequately posted for, so they wanted to be, make sure they were diligent. So, they are posting for the specifics, but the ones they thought that they could cover at the last meeting, yeah, I'll note, otherwise, all these are voted unanimous. So, just if I note otherwise, they had items one through three, the town offices, the report of the town offices and the elected salaries. Those were all voted, Monomoy Regional School Budget, Cape Cod Tech School Budget, the Water Department Budget and Adopt the Capital Plan were also all voted. Capital items under $50,000 was voted on the Gulf Funds, the Fund Landscape Reclamation, Fund Construction of New Golf Tees were voted unanimous. They established a new Capital Infrastructure Fund. It was actually six zero one. There was one abstention on that. On the Article 18, Fund the Road Maintenance Program, that was voted. Fund the new, Article 19, Fund the New Vehicles for DPW, that was also voted. Fund the new DPW equipment. Article 20, 21, Fund the New Excavator for the Water Department was also voted. Article 22, Replace the Lothravav Water Tank was voted. Fund the new Supervisory Controls Data System, otherwise known as SCADA, that was voted as well. And then on the CPC articles, there was, I think that those are scheduled for this Thursday night, that they'll be discussed. Article 27 was to fund the Land Bank Debt Service. I think that was viewed as just a operating expense, so that was voted. Most of the other ones, from 35 to 57, were not voted. They did vote to authorize Article 58, which is to authorize departmental revolving funds. And then they did the other customary ones, Article 63, the Compensating Balance Agreements, the like, 64, the Liability or Title and Non-Title Rivers, and Article 65, the Herring River. So, I just wanted to let the board know, I know, Mr. Chairman, you specifically had brought up that you wanted to have a sense for where the Finance Committee was on some of the votes, so I appreciate that. Mr. DeCosta here, the chairman, did put that information together and has that in this format.
Okay, so for this board, what I have in mind, just because Angelo, Angelo won't be with us next week, I don't mean he's gone away, but I mean, he won't be with us here next week. And he is back the first, first meeting in April, which hopefully everybody will be here for that, that first meeting. I would like to get ourselves organized so that meeting, we do almost nothing but focus on our votes on a lot of these and we'll, we'll define which ones. I would like to take next week and have folks come in who have petition articles available next week, available next week, so we could agenda those, to get those in and have a discussion. And also ask the board to identify as quickly as possible other articles they think we need, the sponsors, if you will, to come back in and talk to us about. We heard many of these discussions that are all Saturday event, so, you know, most cases they probably doesn't need to come back, but if there's an article or seven articles you think we should have folks come back in, let's get them back in here so we can get ourselves prepared so that on that first meeting in, in April, we can start to, to vote through these. Okay? Does that seem like a plan?
Sure.
It's missing March 28th. There's two more March meetings.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
But I'd rather have Angelo here in person. I just think it's.
It's missing two.
No, he's going to be on the screen, the 28th.
Gotcha.
It's just kind of difficult and hard, so, okay. Is it all right with you, Angelo?
Fine with me.
You'll be back that first week, right?
Yep.
And what really, quite frankly, at the moment, what really counts is the FinCon votes, because they're the ones that get published in the, in the warrant. Dana, where are you? Is she here?
Right there.
You're meeting again this week?
Yes.
Does your team have a goal of, like, in the next two weeks, getting through everything or, if I could ask?
Can I ask and get answered? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we're scheduled to meet this Thursday, so we have every other article on the agenda now and we're going to go through them. Any that we need to bring people in, we'll hold, but we're going to try and vote as soon as we can. We have to have our explanations in by the end of the month, so we have to have as much as our stuff done as we possibly can between now and the end of the month.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay? Any else on that? Okay, next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Contract. Let me just set the stage here by saying that Chris's existing contract expires the 30th of June this year. It was a two and a half year contract when he was brought on board and per the contract, by March 30th, this board needs to take, if it desires to, some action associated with the contract. Otherwise, the contract, as the language states, would automatically extend for one year. And I put this on the agenda tonight because next week Angelo is not available and wanted a full board here, because this is important and waiting until the 28th is kind of getting down very close to the 30th. So, we thought we'd do it tonight, or I thought we'd do it tonight. So, with that, on this topic, I know you've all thought about it and noodled it and whatnot, I just ask if there's a positive motion out there to extend the contract in some fashion.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
You may. And by the way, and by the way, just so you know, you have the full rights of participation as far as making motions, even though you're remote, as long as we can hear you, just so you know. Go ahead.
My move that we extend the contract for Chris Clark for two additional years. Benefits and salary changes be dependent on performance evaluations. Period.
I'm just making a note here, so I make sure I have it here.
He cut out, so did he say?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to repeat it, don't worry. I'm just making a note, so.
Would it be helpful if I repeated it?
No, I'm going to repeat it for you. I'm just writing slowly. What I, what I heard you say, when I heard you say for motion, your motion was to extend the contract for two years?
Correct.
Two years, so that would take it to June 30th of 2018, right?
I believe so.
And any benefit and salary adjustments would be dependent upon performance reviews? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I understand that, okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
I will second that for discussion.
Okay, so Linda seconded, so let's, so Angelo, just so I know, your concept is, I'm sort of making this up a little bit, but every April, we do a performance review of the Town Administrator. That's what I believe is in the contract, if I remember the contract properly, right? And so, what you're saying is that based on that performance review, okay, we would then determine or set any and all adjustments, excuse me, adjustments associated with benefits and salaries at that point?
Yes, correct.
Right?
Right.
All right, anybody else?
Uh, just as a question, would be the intent that those discussions would be a board vote? Meaning to, to change benefits or to change salary would be then a board vote?
Did you understand the question?
Yes, I did.
We're trying to understand your motion. So, so what Linda's asking, let's just pretend, we got through a performance review, the board then subsequently, someone would have to make a motion if and all any adjustments needed to be made or wanted to be made to either salary or, or benefits, and the board would vote that.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else in discussion? I hear any more discussion, so we'll put it to a vote. We'll do a roll call vote, so, Michael?
No.
Linda?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
No?
No.
Chairman votes yes. So, it's three to two vote. Everybody get it? Michael was no. Linda was yes. I was yes. Angelo was yes. Janelle was no. Okay? We have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand. Okay.
It's not appropriate.
Okay, next we'll move on to Town Administrator's Report. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have several items this evening. The first item I have is on the Southeast New England Program for Coastal Watershed Restoration Grant Status Update. I had brought to the board's attention that there was a, an initial application that was submitted for this. I think the total was approximately $800,000. It was a letter of intent. Carol Ridley had done the lion's share of work on that. We did receive word back that we have not been asked to submit a formal proposal so that the project will not progress forward. On item, the next item, the Special Town Meeting Warrant, just as a reminder to folks that the board last week had voted that it opens the Special Town Meeting Warrant effective tomorrow and through Friday, March 18th at noon time. So, if people have the, you know, want to have items on the special, I believe it's 100, 100 signatures, so they'd up the ante quite a bit for citizen petition. And I believe some of those are actually, need to go through the, the Finance Committee as well under this, the financial related ones.
I have a quick question about that. May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, in the memo, Chris, it says both March 23rd and March 18th, so I'm a little confused as to what the March 23rd date is reflecting.
I think that, that's pursuant to the, pursuant to the charter. It has Special Town Meeting Articles must be received no later than 40 days prior to the special, which is March 23rd. So, the board can set any timeline that it wants, so it's set in this case, March 18th. So, there's two, there's two deadlines. We have to make sure we get all of our work done prior to March 23rd, so the proposed dates work within that. I think that's the reason for that.
So, the March 23rd is just the, the hard date at which you'd have to get this done. So, we backed up from that to give it a little bit of leeway.
Okay.
Because remember, you know, people need notice that there's going to be items in the special and we have to have time to discuss it and that type of thing. Okay?
The next item I have is just that we did receive at the end of last week, the Chatham-Harwich Inter-Municipal Agreement. So, we have the IMA fairly extensive, they did take some, they being the Town of Chatham, did make some fairly extensive rewrites. I know that the Subcommittee was going to go through and review that and set up a meeting, so I'm not sure what the Subcommittee wants to proceed, but at least we got the material back from Chatham on that.
I think it's a tough read, myself, you know, especially when you read the, the financials. It's obviously written by Chatham. We have the Harwich version, it might be a lot different, but I, but I think that we're going to run into a point, and maybe it's a few weeks from now, where we either can figure this out and it's easy to explain to everybody, or we're going to have to just hold off on this or IP it, you know, from this town meeting. You know, with the concept, maybe that we have a special in the fall or something, but there's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of it's in the front end, having to do with the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when they propose the charges, interest and other, split up a million dollars because we did some project management and all those kinds of things, and there's some wording here, it really disturbs me and that, the way I read it was, if they have to add to the plant, we're paying for it, even though we already paid the first $9 million. I mean, it's, you know, right? This isn't going to happen. So, I think it, we need to use their facility. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. We've all thought that going forward. So, I guess I, I just, you know, asked the Subcommittee that's working on this, that my suggestion would be to go back to Chatham, see if they can get some clarification. But I think if after your next meeting or, you know, in the next three weeks or so, we can't get some closure on this, then we're just going to have to say it's, it's too rushed. I mean, it's just, you know, we've got other things to focus on and this one's hugely important and maybe it deserves its own meeting, along with the regulations and bylaws and all that stuff. So, let's just see how we do in the next couple of weeks would be my suggestion.
Agreed.
So, you guys will take that on, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Angelo, if you do it remotely, we can take this laptop, you can go to Chatham. We'll send you right over there.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, okay. So, anyhow, okay? I mean, it's some good work here, obviously, and, and, you know, I understand what the intent is.
Yeah, we can provide the, the material that we had for what we sent them in terms of what we thought was in agreement, so that way the board's aware. I can put those two together. Obviously, also, I have referred this off to David Young at CDM, CDM, as well as John Giorgio, just to kind of get their review of it. And we'll ship it off to the, the Waste Water Implementation Committee to kind of get some input from them as well.
Okay, and we should also plug the fact we're having this workshop. What are we officially calling that meeting and?
Yeah, that's on my list.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
I'll hold back.
The, the next item I had, it was in the packet, was I had sent out a, I recognize that certainly some of my issues with the board is in regards to communication, so I did make additional commitments to improve my communications with the board. So, I'm not going to go over the, the different elements. I think one of the key components that, Mr. Chairman, you had suggested, and I'm in full agreement, is to do a Town Administrator Action Item Report. We do try to take notes from the meetings, so I think we cover the meetings pretty well, but on individual concerns or if a couple of members of the board send concerns into the office, you know, having some kind of mechanism so we can have those vetted and make sure that we put those on the list, so we can get those responded to in a timely fashion. So, I at least wanted to indicate that we have a draft of that and however the board wishes to proceed, obviously, I'm more than willing to work with the board.
My intent is to bring that back as an agenda item next week, because I want everybody to be on board with either using it or not using it and how we use it and what we use it for. But the intent is that we all understand and record action items that the board wants or takes and we assign responsibilities and deadlines and priorities and all those kinds of things, which is, I'm sure it's something we should have been doing for the last several years, but we haven't. So, let's get that, try and get that focused, but we'll agenda that for next week and actually go through it, okay?
Okay. Another one, I did receive material, which I, I thought the board would be, have some interest in, that Mastod is contemplating making some changes on Route Six. This is still in the developmental stage, but what they're talking about doing is primarily two things. One, and I think this happens pretty much in other parts of the, in the state and even in the country, where they have the mile marker becomes the exit number. So, that one is probably a fairly benign change. But then they also mentioned about putting up those large signs that actually go over the roadway, kind of that steel superstructure.
Looks like New Jersey, yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, to me, for, you know, I think we have kind of a rural character down here and I, I think that would go contrary to that character, but I think it may make some sense to draft something up, and I'm happy to do this, to at least put in some thoughts that why are we doing such large scale type of things when we want to maintain the, the rural character of what the cave is.
Yeah, personally, I think that the, just the, the change in the exit numbers is a bigger deal than, than you may have alluded to. I think that, how many of us know exit 10? I mean, it's exit 10, right? I mean, we don't care how far it is from wherever they're going to start, Fall River or someplace, wherever it is. I don't know that. I mean, I, I think there'll be, are they going to have public hearings on this? I don't know that, I mean, I, I think there'll be, are they gonna have public hearings on this?
Yeah, it said in the material that they were, uh, gonna contemplate scheduling a, uh, a meeting, and they were at a 25% design, so they, I don't think they scheduled a public hearing yet.
Yeah, I mean, I would just suggest, you know, that this board may be agenda for next week, if you're interested, to, um, maybe send a letter, uh, expressing our interest-
Uh, yes.
Or lack of interest or concern or what have you, but, I'm sure-
I think it's a lack of interest in this-
Well-
Doing this.
I think you're right, but we'll talk about it next week, okay? Then we can craft the letter. Sandy, you in favor of this one? I'm sorry, what?
Town meeting.
Could be, yeah.
Resolution.
Yeah. I just don't know yet what they're, they're planning to do with hearings or whatever, but you're right. It could be something easily done. Anyhow, we'll, we'll put that in the agenda next week, and, um, let's figure out what we wanna do with it.
Okay. The, uh, next item I had is, uh, we have had some, uh, discussions, uh, internally. Last year at town meeting, there was a, uh, bylaw that was, uh, voted on, the plastic bags, uh, to limit the, uh, use of those and to prohibit the use in some areas. So we are working on, uh, Charlene and I are, are working on putting together some kind of implementation plan. We do hope to have a, uh, presentation coming into the board for March 28th. Uh, this is something that was, uh, voted by town meeting, so we just wanna make sure we get the, uh, material out. We do need to, to, um, schedule some dates, obviously, for the, uh, implementation of this. Uh, it is something that, for the plastic bags, and, and certainly we'll get into more details on the 28th, but it's for, um, it's not limited to individuals, it's really targeted to stores that still use these type of plastic bags. So we are looking at the, uh, 28th of March to, to come in and do a, a presentation, uh, just to kinda inform people, and we will kinda go around to, uh, individual, um, businesses and try to get a sense for, uh, what their plans are to, uh, to make that, so we give them as much of a heads-up as possible. So we'll have more material in the, uh, in the packet for the-
I suggest you, uh, coordinate that with the Chamber of Commerce, 'cause I think they've had discussions and-
Yeah.
Working on that as well.
We're supposed to have a meeting today, but he's underway, so.
He's down, yeah, he's down, yeah, unfortunately, so. Um, is it clear what the, what the so-called deadline or date is when this gets implemented?
There's probably, we could use a, a couple of potential dates, certainly town meeting, the day that town meeting voted it, which would be May, which would be kind of an earlier, uh, date. However, we were talking about the, uh, actually, uh, bylaw doesn't become official until it's certified by the, uh, Attorney General's Office, and that actually occurred more in August. So when we had a discussion, uh, today, you know, do we wanna have the summer season go by, or do we wanna try to implement it prior to summer? So we were looking at potentially like maybe a June 15th, if we wanna try to get prior to the summer season instead of doing it at the end of the summer season, but that's something that, you know, we, we're still looking at in terms of the, uh, implementation.
Who's going to be the plastic bag police? Huh? You are, Charlene?
It would be the, uh, the Police Department and the Board of Health, uh, the, uh, the two agencies that are identified in the ballot.
Are, are we gonna have some hotline, if people call in and say, please send a police car here, 'cause someone just had a plastic bag?
The snitch bag line.
I guess you know how I feel about this.
I do. I, I know where the board is, and unfortunately, we're town meeting-
No, I know, I under, I understand, I understand. Mrs. DeCosta probably has an answer to this whole thing.
Uh, the answer that I know of is that we didn't put any money in any budget anywhere for any kind of enforcement abilities, so if it's gonna cost extra right at the moment, we don't have a way to fund that.
They don't anticipate us putting any in there, any else?
I was just in town, uh, in Cambridge, where it's already operative, and at the stores, there's just no choice. You either will take the paper bag or not, or buy one of their non-plastic ones, which, by the way, gives Harwich businesses a chance to advertise, because that's what everyone up there is doing. So there's a, a, a potential to push the town.
Once it's all in, I, I agree with you, you know, once it's all in and set, that's one thing, that's a transition that, I think, gets people nervous.
It's a shock the first time, and then it's just becomes normative, everybody just-
I understand. Thank you. Okay.
The, uh, next item I have was, uh, in regards to the Joint Wastewater Summit. Uh, we are looking at conducting that on, uh, at the Harwich Community Center Multipurpose Room on Thursday, April 7th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The idea behind this, uh, and we modeled this on what the Town of Dennis did, was to bring boards and committees together to try to educate or train the trainer as a, uh, a concept. We have lined up, uh, the speakers. Brian Dudley will be from the, uh, Department of Environmental Protection, uh, to talk about, he'll actually moderate, and then also, uh, talk about the perspective of the, uh, Department of Environmental Protection. Patty Daly, who is from the, uh, Cape Cod Commission, to talk about their efforts. Uh, David Young from CDM Smith, uh, to go over the, um, the program as well. And then, um, I was asked to do the, uh, the piece on the financing. Uh, we were hoping that, Mr. Chairman, maybe you could do a welcome to the, the various boards and committees. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we invite, uh, you obviously to do that, as well as all board members to participate. Uh, if you are available for that time, we ask that if you could let, uh, Ann or Sandy in the office know by Friday, April 1st, uh, so we can kind of arrange things. We are doing the set structure that was done in the, uh, Town of Dennis, uh, from what I've heard. It went very, very well, uh, so that means that we'll have kind of assigned seating, breaking up different people to try to get a different cross-section of the organization in terms of that.
Will that be taped or on TV?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And there'll be an agenda published, I assume, pretty soon, yeah, okay.
And then, um, I just, I, I got a call from, uh, the newspaper, uh, today, uh, in regards to a, uh, and there'll be a story on the tax, uh, tax title assignment, and I did receive a request from a board member, so I do have, uh, kind of a summary of what is gonna transpire. Uh, this is one that, uh, the board, I'm sorry, not the board, but the town, um, the town collector and treasurer, uh, kinda governs under Master in Law, Chapter 60, Subsection, uh, 52. Uh, what kinda prompted this was going to the MMA. Uh, there was a law firm, uh, called Talage, that actually, uh, goes around and talks to different communities. What they do is they ask for, uh, those people that have not, uh, paid their taxes up to date and their property goes into tax title, we have the ability to-
Huh? You know what, there's two pages, right?
Yeah, I'm s, you know what?
No, it's not that.
You and I got the single side of it, so.
You got, you got, yeah, you got my original, sorry about that.
All right, you're good.
But on the, um-
This changes everything, Angelo.
You're seriously just rolling that up?
On the, uh, the items, uh, basically what we've done in the past, uh, Mary McIsaac had a, uh, kind of a, a, a system in which she pursued a lot of these on her own, so she wanted to, to pursue those. Uh, it does allow, under the statutes, for the, uh, collector-treasurer to, uh, come up with payment agreements. Uh, but here would be, uh, we have about five-and-a-half million dollars of, um, old tax title that we, this would allow us to potentially come in and, uh, hopefully, uh, take kind of a, a section of it. Uh, this would not, um, cover items that are really small. There is some real filing fees that go into it, so any property that is, is really small or, you know, incidental parcels, uh, we wouldn't necessarily be pursuing that. Other ones that have owners unknown, or the, uh, the ownership is in question, or we have in litigation, uh, those items would be excluded. But this company basically just said that they would take a look at our list and see how much of that, five-and-a-half million dollars would be something, and the way it works is then we would put it up for the, or the treasurer would put it up as a sale auction. Uh, we would get the, the amount that is owed to the town, so there would be a, uh, minimum that would be set, that we would recover, uh, those tax dollars, and then they basically, whoever is the successful bidder, would then buy the town's right to be able to, to do the, uh, the foreclosure. So it is something that's been done in, uh, other towns, uh, because of the status of where we are and, and because we do have a larger volume. I, I think the, uh, reporter said that we were the largest on the Cape, that I think it makes sense. I think that if folks, you know, want to come in, and certainly they know the situation they're in, uh, they can always come and, and talk to the, uh, collector-treasurer to try to make some payment arrangement to avoid us, uh, having them in that, uh, situation. And certainly, we, we wanna work with people. But, uh, this is something that we're kind of exploring, that company, once they get back to us with a, uh, a listing of who they would pursue, uh, the, the treasurer-collector has to, uh, make a decision as to who she wants to put on the list and, and who she doesn't. So that is something that, you know, obviously in, in business, you always look for the different opportunities to, uh, make sure that we run more efficiently, and this is something that has been done in several other towns. I think, uh, just recently, they did Yarmouth, was done fairly recently. So, uh, just, uh, a neighbor not too far from us, uh, completed this, uh, project.
So, so let me ask a question. I think you mentioned 5.2 million dollars, is that the-
5.5 is the current outstanding balance.
Okay, and that, that's the amount of back real estate taxes owned to the town?
Yes. And that goes over a period of time, not just one year, but a period of time.
So 5.5 million is outstanding, if you will, um, from folks out there owning property that, that haven't paid those taxes. Is that public information as to, um, if someone owes real estate taxes?
I believe when they do the, uh, the tax title notice, that that is public. They have to advertise that in the paper.
But if you haven't done it yet, so I'm just, I'm just saying today-
All this, all this that we're talking about has already been noticed in public.
Okay, oh, okay, so, so-
We haven't done anything for FY16.
Okay, so those, those properties that owe the 5.5 million have at least been-
At least a year.
Put on notice that they are in arrears, and that information is public?
Yes.
So it's not like we're raising somebody's name when it's-
Yeah, no, this isn't-
Not public, I'm just trying to be sensitive to that. And so the question I would get to is if we, there's a lot of detail associated with this Talage group, I guess. Um, and I guess we'd wanna maybe see them at some point, if we were on to get on this route, to find out what it's really all about, um, but whether or not someone would be notified ahead of time that they were gonna pursue them and give them an opportunity, the property owner, to, uh, make amends, if you will, and come up with a, I'll call it a payment plan or something before. These folks, these folks, I'd just say to send it on. At the same time, you know, 5.5 million dollars, you know, these are properties that the rest of us are paying our taxes and keeping current, hopefully. All the folks out there are doing that. That's how we operate the town, and there's five-and-a-half million dollars of, uh, taxes that have not been paid.
Does that 5.5 million, is that the taxes, does that include interest?
I believe that includes interest as well.
Michael?
Sounds like the in-house process worked before. Is there a, uh, percentage that was able to be collected, or is this something that we're not going to explore?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I think in terms of, um, Mary McIsaac had a lot of experience, the previous treasurer-collector. Uh, she had worked for the Department of Revenue, so I think she felt comfortable pursuing on a, kind of an individual basis. Uh, with the transition, Amy is a little bit newer to that element of her position, so this is a, uh, opportunity for, uh, us to kinda get, help her get caught up. So that's a little bit the rationale behind, uh, why we're pursuing this. Probably, Michael, most likely, we would do dual-track, where we would do some of them here, and then there are still that are, some that are gonna have to be pursued, 'cause they're in current litigation.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, I'll bet 5 million dollars, or five-and-a-half million dollars spreads out over time, you know, like if it started out 20 years ago, you see a little thing like this. Uh, as you get closer and closer, you're gonna see bigger numbers. I don't know, I don't know what the spread is, and I don't know when, when Mary was doing it, how, um, what her success rate was. I guess I would just describe it that way, you know, you know, whether she chased all 5.5 million, was she on average getting 200,000 a year, 500,000 a year or something?
From memory, I think she brought in about 300,000 to 350,000 for the two years that I worked with her. So she, she brought in a, a pretty good chunk of money.
And is, but is this outfits intent, that they would, I'll just say, attack the 5.5 million and try and get, you know, much bigger results quicker? Is that the way they work?
That's the intent, 'cause they specialize in it.
Yeah.
And now they are gonna, I'm sure cherry pick the ones that are, the ones they think they're able to accomplish, so there'll still be some outstanding.
Yeah, I, I mean, my recommendation would be, before we do anything with these people, is maybe have them come in and see us make a presentation, at least we can understand what it's about. I mean, you know, how they go about it, that type of thing, so.
That concludes my, uh, comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Selectman's Report? Michael? Linda? Angelo, Selectman's Report.
No comment.
What?
No comment.
They're all out here waiting for you. There's, there's 25 people out here, want you to say something.
Good evening.
He does have his Alan Harbor Yacht Club shirt on, though, I can tell you that, so.